Lyrics mean or anything, but just the beat and the and the sound makes them smile, moves their feet, makes them move. And so the ambient power of music is really, really incredible. And So a lot of it has comes down to what 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 kind of mood I'm in, what what uh? What genre I might like like to listen to. Bob Marley has always been a one of my favorites. Uh yeah, because of the power of The message and the power of the music and the positivity, you know, like um. You you listen to not only the 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 Beat of the reggae where they play on the backbeat, but also The in the inspirational words that are so often in the line in the in in the Text of the song. So I would say Bob Marley would be if you ask if you had to ask me.
All ritual in your life that has stuck with you your whole life and why is it significant?
I talk to myself.
Very smart. That's about therapy. I get what you're saying because I get I do that too.
Um, me driving because I'm I'm I drive a lot. Um. I get some of my best thoughts when I'm driving. Um, I listen to podcasts, I listen to self uh Uh, like, you know, Affirmations, um Motivational things, um. And even when I was playing, I would I would write my dad's initials. CFM on the toes of my cleats. So if I ever got beat Or if I didn't think I was playing up to par, I look down and look at them, you know, look at the initials, my dad's initials, and then they give me like You know, come on Dante, come on, I literally talk to myself.
Do you feel like that your dad's presence, I'm very big in like again, like my faith is Christianity, but the biggest thing though.
It just instilled that in me and never to get too, you know, high on yourself. Uh, uh, it's easy to get knocked down when you're when you're when you're out there patting yourself on the back or something. So I I I don't think I ever got into that mode really. And I always wanted to, you know, Just find ways to be better and regardless of what was what was being said about me positively or negatively. So it's uh Yeah, yeah, it's kind of stayed with me.
So that brings me to a point and you're pretty much talking about like, say, your mom, like you guys living in B C, your dad, Justine, and then your daughters. What three things about where you live currently do you find most beautiful? Then we'll talk about you playing for the B C Lions.
Yeah, uh, things that I, yeah, we've been out here uh in B C for for ten years now, which is as long as I've ever lived anywhere. Which is which is pretty cool and and uh it's It's been great, man. It's been great. I love the mountains. I love waking up, seeing the mountains every day.
Hey guys, uh, good afternoon. Welcome to another edition of Derek's Positivity Injection Podcast. I'm very honored to have Jeff Barotti, the longest tenured city councillor in Winnipeg. Before this podcast goes on, I want to pass my sincere thoughts and condolences to Sarah and Jason Schreier's family on the passing of Elmwood North Cudonan City Councilor Jason Schreier. He gave me very positive feedback about my job with what I do for a living. And an interaction I have with him through volunteering I do with what he did for the city will never be forgotten. He'll be very remiss. But anyways, I'm looking forward to have Jeff Barotti. And very shortly, so I'm going to put on the timer for thirty seconds and I'm going to be live regardless. It's gonna be an amazing podcast and I'm looking forward to talking to A great guy, a good councillor who's made this world better. And I want to thank first and foremost The frontline workers, whether we're talking police officers, the fire department, the paramedics. And anyone who works or is involved in the city in any aspect because they made this world a better place. Anyways, Guys, Jeff Parati should be here shortly. Good afternoon, guys. Welcome to another edition of Derek's Positivity Injection Podcast. I'm your host Derek. As for those who don't know me, I've I am busy. I was born as not fit in and stand out. My biggest feelings toward society is that there's a narrative where We need to look at the positive as- aspects and learn from each other. The world is very critical and very divided on with whatever your issue is. Whether you're pro this or anti this, I want to see less division and I want to see Society with some cohesion and some unification because I believe the best ability in society is availability. Again, I can't be more thrilled than honored once he pops on very shortly, councillor Jeff Barotti, who's the longest tenured City councillor in Winnipeg. First and foremost, I love with what the city has been accomplishing. Again, with what Mayor Scott Gillingham's really done for the city. Uh, doing incredible things. He's really real general and he's really rejuvenated the spirit of Winnipeg. Same as the premier, Wap Canoe, doing amazing things and the city councillors across the board and along with the frontline workers. I have nothing but love and respect for the city. And basically, we're going to talk to city councillor Jeff Barotti, talk about Obviously, some questions I got to ask him just in general about the whole landscape of being a city councillor, some positive and life advice. We'll talk about Jason Schreier because the impact he had on me through my job, volunteering that I do, of a personal interaction that we had, which was very impactful. And I'm very grateful that we had that. So councillor Barotti should be here joining us very shortly. I'm just waiting for the queue and he'll be here when he gets here. So if not, guys, I'm going to tune myself out for a sec and I'm going to play you some clips from my previous episodes. Thank you guys for watching. Don't forget to hit that like, that subscribe and let us know what you think.
Um, but no, the crazy horse thing was just, you know, because of the guitar solos and all the um, almost like uh Anthem style songs, I would I would say.
Gotcha. And what are three songs that would always be fun on the top of your playlist?
Covers or originals? Probably covers, you're asking. Um.
Probably covers, yeah, I'll go with covers.
Yeah, yeah. No, no, we do fuck it up, okay? And rock it in the free world. Those will probably always be in there for our Neil staples. Uh. And I would say, um, You know, we're doing some John Cougar or doing Small Town on the acoustic guitar. Um. I don't know, man. It's like, I'd have to really put some thought. I'd almost have to see my set list again to To remember. I know we do like, uh, we're doing uh Get a Haircut, George Thurler.
It just instilled that in me and never to get too, you know, high on yourself. Uh, uh, it's easy to get knocked down when you're when you're when you're out there patting yourself on the back or something. So I I I don't think I ever got into that mode really. And I always wanted to, you know, Just find ways to be better and regardless of what was what was being said about me positively or negatively. So it's uh Yeah, yeah, it's kind of stayed with me.
So that brings me to a point and you're pretty much talking about like, say, your mom, like you guys living in B C. Hey guys, welcome to Derek's Positive Injection. This is take three. So you technology, regardless if you're using a computer or a cell phone or a Mac, it's very difficult to figure out. But we know I have my guest who I'm very thrilled and honored to have. Like, this has been a long time going. In my honest opinion, and this is just a fact and it's a shoot, this is a longer tenured cit- I almost said citizen. Everyone's been a long tenured citizen in Winnipeg, but the longest city councillor In the city of Winnipeg, he's made the community of Winnipeg better. Specifically in the area, North Cudonan area, Elmwood, whatever. I don't care what avenue of the city. We have a lot of great city councillors in the city. Again, I want to give a shout out to J- Jason Schreier, Sarah and his family because he'll be remiss and never forgotten because he made this community better and interaction I had with at my job. Through a volunteer thing I did, the personal conversation and impact he had on me, similar to councillor Barotti that we've talked on and off numerous times. I'm not going to get into that. But anyways, again, Jeff Brody is a goldmine for information. He's a wealth of knowledge. He's the voice of experience. And I'm not just saying that just because he's on on air. He's very articulate. He's very detailed and precise. And I think that many people have misconceptions, whether if you're a sports athlete, a musician, A politician, if you're just an everyday Joe walking in society trying to make this world a better place. So I'm going to go into my countdown. In thirty seconds, councillor Jeff Barotti will be joining us. And I thank Jeff for joining us first and foremost Because he's a busy guy like we all are. So Stay tuned, guys. Thirty seconds countdown coming on and Jeff will be on shortly. Good afternoon, Jeff. How are you doing, boss?
I'm good, Derek. How about you?
I'm doing really good, man. Talk to me what your first couple of hours been like, then we'll go ahead with this podcast.
My last couple hours?
Yeah, a couple hours. I could say like how the couple of years have been, remember? That would be like a whole book in itself.
Yeah, late uh late this morning, I was over at uh sixteen sixty Henderson Highway, which is a big high-rise apartment block, uh talking to a bunch of seniors About some of the changes that are coming to the the transit network, starting in uh Starting at the end of June. Um, you know, there's some good parts, there's some bad parts, but it's changed. So uh, we're also going to have a transit trainer going to visit with them in June. So they'll have, you know, opportunity to learn how how things are changing as well. So it's Uh, that was interesting. Uh, I was in my office this afternoon for a while with my assistant, uh, dealing with a whole multitude of files. Uh, and then I got my haircut this afternoon and
Look at her, brother. You look like twenty. You look younger than me, buddy.
Thanks, Derek.
You bet. So I always like to ask our listeners, Jeff, when I start my podcast, I'm sure you've seen a few on the shorts on the social medias. What is your idea of perfect happiness?
Perfect happiness. Uh, just Again, it's it's that feeling where, you know, you feel relaxed, you feel fulfilled, you feel loved. You feel that, you know, you make a difference in in lives of yourself and others. So, yeah, I I strive for that every day. Don't, different degrees of success. There's some days where you're batting your head against the wall and uh But there's other days where, you know, you look and say, hey, like, you know, I made a difference like And I love driving through North Cudonan because I can point out things that, you know, went well because, oh, look, you know, I Added to that parking lot at a stupid soccer field. I mean, it's ridiculous, but it makes a difference. Spray pad, kids in the summer, libraries, you Jeep egg was trailed, the weight Israeli was handled. I mean, if I hadn't made a stink about keeping You know, lanes open during construction, um, it would have been years of of uh Hell for residents of Northeast Winnipeg.
Would you say it would be more also would be respectful to say that would be a lot of political backlash?
Uh, well, political backlash, but just, you know, um You know, infrastructure is is tough to deal with. I mean, you have to fix the roads. You don't want to pay for the roads. Right, um, you know, and you can't let them close down wherever you possible. I mean, Arlington Bridge is an example where we did have to close a major structure. But in this case, you know, it's not that far from McPhillips. It's not that far from the Slough Rabjet Bridge. Coming up uh in twenty twenty six and twenty twenty seven. I mean, it's gonna be hard for harder for me to come see you at Costco there, Derek, but uh Courtney Overpass is going to be down to two lanes for two summers in a row. It's gonna be a real pain in the butt. Uh, not looking forward to it, but Again, we're trying to, you know, push our public service to get creative and try to find ways to uh Minimize that closure and perhaps, you know, uh Have workarounds, but
But at the end of the day, Jeff, it's gonna be a lot of progress for this city. So is it going to be a pain in hindsight? Sure. But arguably, it's going to be benefiting the whole like community of Winnipeg in itself.
That's right. I mean, once it's done, I mean, it'll be in good condition for decades to come again. Uh, but again, you know, it's fifty year infrastructure. It needs that major work now. So the bridge decks on the Concordia Overpass over the C P mainline. They're, you know, in need of massive uh renewal.
Gotcha. So Jeff, I want to ask you a couple of questions. Again, when your partner has passed on and uh, like again, I want to be respectful first and foremost. Because I want you to be clear, Jeff, it's okay to feel however you you're feeling because it's natural to grieve. Can you share a happy memory of the late great Jason Schreier?
Uh, he's he's just a goofy character. Uh, you know, it was it was fun. You know, we're You know, we're at a conference. We've had, you know, meetings and sessions all day. And then at the end of the day, you know, we end up at a karaoke bar and, you know, He's the first guy to grab a mic and get the whole room roused up.
Right.
Uh, just a couple, just during spring break week, I was at a Costco on a Monday afternoon, which was not a wise thing to do.
For sure.
Very busy place. This line was light up to the back of the store. I'm uh I'm leaving the store, getting about to have my bill checked. And Jason Schreier came in out the exit, which you're not supposed to do anymore, but he came and he
Yeah, you're right.
He came and grabbed my shrimp fried rice out of my cart and started running with it. I couldn't tell who it was. Uh, Greg Mackling from six uh six eighty C G O B was right behind me in line and he didn't even realize it was Jason at the time, but you know, Goofy character. He's a lot of fun. I mean, as many days as I wanted to, you know, wring his neck because he'd start rambling on about something in circles and, you know, Taking up a lot of time, you know, sometimes I felt needlessly. He was just a, you know, larger than life character, you know, out of work and uh and a genuinely good guy.
Absolutely. Like as you said, like I'm working at Costco or seeing you at Costco, Jeff, I saw Jason Schreier. So he pulled me aside to volunteer. It was him and his wife that just pulled me aside saying that they love My attitude and my demeanor and what have you. And just like about how you're going through rough things. Whether if he was doing good or bad, you would never know because he just had a very nice, as you said, origin and life presence.
Yeah, yeah. So certainly going to miss him around, but uh, yeah, it's Uh, coming up in June, uh, one of the projects we worked on together was a new spray pad at Bronx Park Community Club. So um, I had been talking to Jason, we were planning to do an opening there. So certainly want to live up to to that com- promise, that commitment. We're gonna have a DJ out there. We're gonna have uh I don't know if it's gonna be a hot dog court or maybe ice cream treats we'll hand out to everybody in attendance and we'll just have a formal ribbon cutting. I've heard, you know, from a lot of my colleagues on council now, they want to be out there too, just, you know, because again, this was a project that uh Jason was involved with as well as myself. So uh, probably the mayor will get out as well. So that'll probably be the Uh, first or second Saturday in June out of Bronx Park.
That's gonna be incredible at all, Jeff. Remember what his go-to karaoke song was that he would usually sing?
Oh, shoot, um. Could You Be Loved by Bob Marley and the Wailers. I think it was was one of his favorites. So, yeah, uh. Councillor Edie did a rendition of it at uh at our council meeting on Friday. I have heard Jason do it more than once. Yeah.
Nice, awesome. Glad to hear that, buddy. And what do you feel That councillor Schreier valued most in life? Because you've been around him, like you guys said, you've had probably numerous interactions.
Yeah, I mean, he really did care for his community, I think. He um Um, he loved music and culture and arts. Um Uh, again, he had a very different life than a lot of people. I mean, he, you know, obviously the son of the governor general. I mean, He grew up at, you know, uh, Rideau Hall in Ottawa. Uh, he played, he went to school with and played with Justin Trudeau back in the day. And then he went when uh Ed Schreier was the ambassador, I believe, to Australia. He lived in Australia for a while. He spoke a gazillion different languages. He knows how to, you know, bunga dance. I've been, I was at a Indian reception and he Knew all the moves to uh You know, to do those bunga dance. I thought I was just screwing in and screwing out light bulbs, but I'm having fun here, but no. Uh, my my Indo friends would be okay with my jokes, so.
Gotcha. And what do you think uh councillor Schreier would want you to do right now in life?
Uh, again, you know, continue on in the the memory of the things that he, you know, cared about, you know, try to, you know, Affordability and on things like construction inflation was a a big concern of his. Um, you know, he supported, you know, uh, the labor movement. I mean, he's a, you know, pro, you know, union, pro labor guy. Less so than I am, but um You know, again, I, people need to be paid and people need to work.
For sure. And everyone's gonna obviously have a difference. Your point, Jeff.
So I mean, yeah, um. So some of those files will be ones that Jason would care about, I'd say. Uh, but again, you know, and You know, recreational amenities for the neighborhood. So Again, looking forward to getting that spray pad open finally. And I know that was something that Jason and I both worked strongly towards uh to get getting done. So Uh, looking forward to that.
You gotta give yourself like a big hug at all to Jeff because you made this world a better place. I've said that to you directly in public. I've said that to you on social media and same with councillor Schreier. Similar with all your other councillors throughout the city and like, obviously, like I said, the frontline workers, The police officers, the fire department and the paramedics, you guys are unsung heroes.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Yeah, no worries. And I'm just being honest, man. And what do you think you're gonna miss most about councillor Schreier?
What I miss most about councillor Schreier, um. Again, sometimes the he he, there were, he had certain Files and issues that he took took extra care of. And, you know, it was it was funny how he could take something completely unrelated and try and tie it back to Construction inflation, you know, like
Brit.
What color is the sky? Well, let me tell you about construction inflation. I I it was it was It was almost funny at the point to the point where, you know, we tied in. So, yeah.
Awesome, Jeff. So moving forward again, like that was that was a very big tribute. And again, thank you again for being your your First being a empathetic, but then at the same time, though, just understanding the human dynamic Of your relationship with a fellow city councillor because like my podcast, as you know, For all intents and purposes, it's directly to focus on the positive aspect, the human element of person, because I just focus on you As a city councillor, you focusing on me and my job. Nothing personal, but we have things to do and we got business to take care of.
Absolutely. No, and again, uh, positive influence on our councils, so for sure.
Exactly. And what would you say comforts you on bad days at all, Jeff? Speaking of, I know it's positive, this is a little bit of a contrast, but
Uh, yeah, um, I Enjoy, you know, taking time out and making a dinner. Like, you know, I I do a lot of the cooking in the house. My wife's a great baker and a lot of other stuff around the house, but I I like, you know, unplugging it the other day and and preparing supper. Um, I enjoy time with our dog, whether it's, you know, taking taking her for a walk or You know, just playing with a rope in the house, um, just, you know, Pure undulterated love, you know, like you, you know, you have a lousy day and There she is with her tail wagging and, you know, Not a care in the world. So spending time with the dog is 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 huge for me. Yeah, um, I like traveling, you know, exploring new places, seeing new things, trying new foods and experiencing cultures. Um, you know, my my wife and I are, you know, dual income, no kids. We do have a dog, we've got the pandemic dog, but uh We do take the opportunity where possible to travel. Uh, again, you know, avoiding the U S right now because of the pen, you know, the 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 politics with that, but
For sure.
You know, just planning, you know, looking at even, you know, some summer getaways this year in Canada and uh This past winter, we took a fairly exotic trip, uh, going to Fiji, Australia and Bali. So Uh, you know, we can we can stay home for a while now.
Absolutely, Jeff. Out of those three, like Fiji, Australia and Maui, I think you said Bali, Bali. What was distinct of all three and what do you like most about it? For someone who's never traveled to those three places? Because you're gonna help the tourism in Manitoba, obviously. There are also those countries that you brought up.
Uh, Fiji, super humid, super lovely, nice people. Um, beautiful, clear water, like the snorkeling and and, you know, resort we were at, were were just wonderful. Uh, Australia, very clean, very organized, uh, a lot of, you know, uh Uh, the problems we see in our in our cities in North America seem to be less there. The, you know, the amount of uh Poverty and homelessness, you know, there were some, but it was notably less than what I would notice here. Um. One thing that I noticed, you know, say in the city of Adelaide, uh, was public art. That's one thing that, you know, we've um You know, maybe took and taken the gas off of the pedal of a little bit in Winnipeg. We're doing a little bit less than we used to. And uh, it was just noticeable how how beautiful a lot of public spaces were in Adelaide because of the the public art. Um, we, you know, did some wine sampling in the Napa Valley. It's not Napa, in the Barossa Valley of Australia. I do, uh, we do enjoy our wine at home. And uh, Sydney was beautiful, the the zoos, the opera house, the water, the beaches. It uh, Service Paradise, we were there during uh, Super Bowl. That was wonderful. And Bali too, just again, nice people. Um We had a beautiful resort and uh, no, it was just nice. Again, we worked really hard to get the the budget passed and the budget through. So it was nice to take, uh, you know, a couple of weeks after that to to get away.
Absolutely, because it's easily to have that skewed perception, obviously, because I don't work for the city, Jeff, but the the biggest thing though is The misconceptions, they think again, oh, this is not getting done or this, like I've had this talk to you privately, then also directly to you. But the biggest thing though is the misconceptions about how people think you do a hundred thirty-two different jobs. And meanwhile, There's a lot of planning, there's a lot of budgeting, allocating, Getting grants and making sure that everyone's on the same page collectively With your other fellow city councillors and obviously getting approval from the mayor. Then at the same time, though, the premier and try to adjust accordingly.
Yeah, um, again, the city is involved in so many different things and Being a city councillor, you you need to be a little bit of an expert on everything, you know, it's I sometimes joke, you know, I'm not a traffic engineer, but you know, I play one on television. Because again, the media, like we're available, we're publicly facing and, you know, we're being asked by the media on a daily basis, you know, what about this? What about that? Whether it's, you know, uh, library hours or uh, you know, construction policies or how we lock Ice time in our arenas. There's, you know, Sewer treatment plant operation, um Land use planning, knowing, you know, you don't build industrial plants next to schools and uh, there's, it's it's real life SimCity in some respects. It's 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 a fascinating job. I mean, but uh, and like you say, it takes you in so many different directions, you know, some mornings I think I know where the day's gonna go, but then I open the newspaper, it's like, oh, look at this. I had no idea this was coming and Or I didn't even know it was a thing and They can go in completely different directions. So it's uh, it's 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 really neat. Um, but it's uh Yeah, uh, it's it's been a really wonderful experience. I'm very blessed by the residents of North Cudon putting this trust and and confidence in me. Um, you know, one moment, you know, I'm dealing about, you know, overruns of a multi-billion dollar sewage treatment plant. And the next moment, you know, we're Talking about, you know, a tire print in a neighbor's yard because that vehicle drove through it, you know, we We legitimately get all sorts of calls. I've I've been very lucky to have had good staff working for me. Time on council so that, you know, they can triage, you know, the calls that Uh, you know, they can help answer without them to have me involved. But, you know, when I do need to be involved, I have no problem rolling up my Sleeves and, you know, calling the director of public works or planning property development or
Doing anything, man. You're you're always on board. You're always on turn. What is the word? You're like a Michael Jordan of of politics because again, you're ten steps ahead of everyone. I see that. Obviously, with respect, because again, you've been the longest tenured city councillor like I opened up with, so.
And again, like I always try to, you know, ask intelligent questions, you know, like, why are we doing it this way? Why, you know, Why can't we get the wait times down to, you know, at our at our water billing department right now? Like, it's just It shouldn't be rocket science.
No, absolutely. But again, it's like you could lead a horse to water, but you can't make it run to the liquor store. You just can't, Jeff.
Exactly.
So basically, what do you feel in 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 your world? What's the worst advice being dispensed that you see in society?
Who the worst advice being dispensed in society? Oh, my gosh, um. I don't know. I mean, I I I I think sort of society's downfall right now is uh The fact that we're getting so much of our ne- media and, you know, news and stuff through social media. And it is such a cesspool of hate Of um, bad content. Um, and you know, and the traditional media has been hurting as a result, you know, how many people, you know, Start a newspaper and go all the way through it, you know, on a Saturday. I mean, I get them all and I don't even get through them all, you know, on 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 a weekend anymore, because
For sure. You'll look if you finish like one column, never mind read the whole newspaper itself.
And then I'm, you know, stuck with my phone and I'm desk scrolling through all sorts of garbage on, you know, on Facebook. And I actually think the Canadian law that forbids um Those those uh, social media providers from linking to public websites is a mistake. Uh, I mean, there's ad- I mean, there's advertising opportunities on those, you know, traditional media Websites, whether it's newspapers or 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 a TV station. At least it's, you know, content that's, you know, trying, even if it's not entirely successful at being objective and and, you know, less
Rather than subjective and just basing it off of like feelings and emotions. And to your point, Jeff, the biggest thing though, it's easy to decipher with what's factual and what's not factual. When you actually talk to the source and whatever the things are. But if you're bombarded, it's better to create a world of more critical thinkers rather than just say, this is just very closed minded and things are the way it is.
Right. Uh, uh, again, there's so many weird paths you can go down, you know, you want to Prove the sky isn't blue. You could find a website to very thoroughly convince you otherwise. It's
Absolutely, Jeff.
Yeah.
So tell talk to our listeners, what adult in your life influenced you the most?
Um, again, you know, my 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 parents were, I think, a very positive influence on me. I mean, they always worked hard. They Did the right things. I mean, they weren't hyper political. Um, that sort of was, that was my own thing. But um, yeah, just again, my my father was a small entrepreneur. He ran a small real estate appraisal business. And, you know, he he worked hard and I think he instilled that in myself and my brother. And, you know, I think we've turned out pretty good.
Absolutely, boy, brother. And what adult, okay, I already asked you that. Tell me your heroes and how they impacted your life.
Oh, gosh, um. Again, I, not all heroes wear capes. Like, again, I think both of my parents, you know, uh, doing the
Superman with a nice haircut. You're like the Clark Kent or the Bruce Wayne right now, man.
There you go.
He's saving us from Gotham, buddy.
There you go. No, and I mean, and and, you know, almost anybody in elected office. I mean, there's some who I like better than others, uh, you know, I mean, I remember looking back at, you know, people like Ronald Reagan and Brian Mulroney back in the eighties, you know, when I was Very young man, again, uh, I'm forty-eight years old at the moment, so Um, growing up, watching, you know, uh, Family Ties and Alex P Keaton being a a fan of Reagan, I, you know, sort of uh And, you know, wanting to be an entrepreneur. I I figured I was probably going to be an entrepreneur in life or uh
For sure.
I was quite involved in tech in the nineties. I was uh, president of the Apple Computer Club back in the nineties, so Had a bit of a geek following there, so I I I went to business school and did management information systems and marketing, but Uh, so, yeah, my heroes were some elected folks. They were some, you know, world changers, you know, people like Steve Jobs and Steve Wozniak that started Apple Computer. Um People like that, you know, were certainly role models and people that I I respected growing up and I put into the category of heroes. You know, even on the dark side, you know, Bill Gates, you know, like uh Things too. So, yeah, I mean, some of those early tech guys are sort of people I still hold in in high regard.
Very, 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 very awesome, uh, Jeff. I got to ask you a question. A lot of our listeners, again, this is a little bit more of a contrast. They go through difficult times or challenging times where they lose someone, which is, what is the saddest moment of your youth? And how do you pay tribute to those you've lost? Only if you're comfortable discussing it, because I don't want to overstep boundaries.
Yeah, yeah, no, I appreciate, um. Yeah, um. I tend to close up a little bit, you know, when when things are I tend to close up a little bit, you know, when, when things are, like, you know, I haven't given a lo- a long speech, you know, even about the, the recent passing of, uh. Councillor Schreier, you know, I've sort of internalized that a little bit and. You know, behind closed doors, I've, you know, my own private memorialization of, of that. I've, I've lost, uh, all my grandparents now. I never met my grandfather on my father's side. He passed before I was born, but. Um. Yeah, I mean, and there, there are, you know, tough times in life, uh, you know, losing, you know, elections and stuff. I, I ran for a. A nomination for the Federal Conservative Party about a decade ago now and was not successful there and. You know, those, having good friends around you to, you know, um, prop you up and keep you encouraged and. You know, recognizing that, you know, you, there's still good things to do and not, you know, life's. Life's not gonna come to an end, you know, even though you weren't successful in, in one particular task, so.
Right.
Um, yeah, I, I'm probably, I probably should be better at it than I am, but th- there's your comments.
And plus, the biggest thing though, Jeff, in respect with what you said, thank you again for your candor and your honesty and your transparency. But the biggest thing as I feel is that it's very easy, like it's better to internalize it sometimes because there's emotions and emotions and some people like our listeners, myself. For that matter, may not understand or comprehend exactly how you're feeling. So for me to come off subjectively, that's like, I know you're going through that, be a lie.
Yeah, that, that's fair. Everyone's gonna be handle, handle, handle grief and, you know, loss differently, so.
For sure, and this is gonna segue into a question. I think you're gonna like this question. How is failure or apparent failure that you may have ju- just addressed right now set you up for later success or on a regular basis?
Yeah, um. Again, you know, you have to be tenacious. You gotta realize that, you know, when you. When things don't go your way, you know, you, you regroup, you stick a, ta- take a step back, you know, maybe you need to, you know. Take, take some time for yourself first, but then you uh, figure out, you know, what's your next priority is, what, what's the next mountain you're gonna climb and, and tackle it head on. Um, you know, I've, I've lost battles and you know, sometimes I've, you know, uh. After the fact that, oh geez, I was right, look at that. And sometimes it's like, oh, maybe it wasn't such a big deal after all, so.
Right.
And right now, certainly interested to see what uh, transpires after Portage de Maine opens. I think it's gonna be. Uh, bad for downtown traffic. I think it's gonna be bad for people movement throughout the city because.
For sure.
There's a lot more people that need to move through Portage de Maine in vehicles than, you know, on foot and. This is gonna put an awful lot of emphasis on those people crossing on foot, uh, in a, in an area where, you know, again, it's a major transportation hub for our city, so.
Absolutely, Jeff.
Up, so we'll see what happens.
I gotta like expand on with what you just brought up. Portage de Maine is definitely a controversial issue for a lot of people in the city and again, I'm being respectful to everyone who came up with the idea, whether they're. Agreed with it or they went against it, first and foremost, I get either side. But from your honest opinion, if you and your wife have chatted about this, have you guys decided how you're gonna navigate that? Because. My firm belief is that there could potentially be accidents and I never wanna see anyone get hurt or.
Of course.
Good, yeah.
Uh, 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 again, I mean pedestrians do cross other intersections in the city and you know.
It's evidence.
And, you know, uh, some intersections have more pedestrian vehicle collisions than others. Um, uh, again, for me, it's, you know, a fair, fairly small number of people are gonna wanna be crossing it. And it's gonna dramatically slow down every person who needs to go through it. I mean, if you don't travel through Portage de Maine or go downtown ever, big deal. But for a lot of people who work, you know, in, in the downtown, out by Polo Park and their route takes them through Portage de Maine, especially people in North Winnipeg. There's the, the movement, according to traffic engineers, that's gonna be impacted the most, is going to be. Uh, eastbound Portage Avenue to northbound Main in the PM rush hour. And um, that's mostly people that live up in North Caledonian, East Caledonian and Transcona and West Caledonian and Old Caledonian. Riverbend, River Grove, I mean, those neighborhoods are the ones who I believe, uh, are the ones that are gonna, you know, be negatively impacted the most by this, so. Again, um, I was successful in twenty eighteen in delaying the opening of Portage de Maine by forcing then. Mayor Bowman, who's running for reelection, to have a plebiscite. I don't really like plebiscites, but this was my way of political tactic to do what I believe was right in principle by. Delaying or hopefully cancelling the opening of Portage de Maine. Unfortunately, now I, I lost the vote, uh, Portage de Maine is going to be opening this, this summer. And I, uh, you know, for the, for the, for the sake of traffic movement, I think it's a mistake.
I respect that at all, Jeff, and everything was ver- very fair point, so this is gonna expand like more on the issue. Do you think our down, our main street downtown is healthy and successful? If not, what, would you, what do you feel you would need to do to change it?
Yeah, um, downtown in Winnipeg has always been a controversial and difficult subject. I mean, I don't think we can have a, a safe. Uh, successful city without a, a safe downtown core. Um, I really thought, you know, things were on the right path prior to COVID. Uh, more people moving downtown, more people downtown, just out on the streets. And it felt reasonably safe. Um, unfortunately, um. A lot of people went through a downward spiral through COVID.
Right.
And they're, you know, unhoused or, 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 uh, not, or, or live, sleep, sleeping roughly and you name it. Um, our, our downtown has issues, uh, the usage of drugs and. People who are not mentally well and that are a danger to themselves and to others is, is a problem. Um, you know, again, I, I really do believe that, you know. We want people to live the best lives that they can with whatever, you know. A higher power has given them, uh, however, at some point, you know, if. You know, you've done so many mental, you, you, you've done so many violent crimes, um, you know, I think there's a limit to, you know, what society should be able to. So I, I, I do believe that we need bail reforms so that, you know, if you're going to be a danger to yourself and to others. Uh, you know, incarceration, you can't commit a crime if you're locked up. I mean, people say, you know. You're not gonna make them better if, 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 you know, you lock them up, but on the flip side, they're not gonna cause harm to somebody else.
Absolutely, Jeff.
So, I, you know, it sounds a little hard and a little heartless, but again, give people, you know, a fair number of chances. If they want to rehabilitate. Give them every opportunity to do so, but at some point, if, you know, they don't wanna make the effort and, and they're a danger, they shouldn't be mixed in with the rest of society.
And Jeff, to expand on your point, and I'm totally like in line with your, like your thought process, because I feel like generally speaking, you and I both know frontline workers and. Whether we're talking officers, whether we're talking paramedics or firefighters.
Yeah.
But the biggest thing that they've told me to like privately and obviously we, we're gonna be respectful of their confidentiality just as much as they are with me and vice versa. But the biggest thing that it is, is hard to remedy those situations because if someone's in and out and what have you and like to expand more on Vancouver. Vancouver is such a scary site, cause I got, I have relatives in Vancouver, but the biggest thing though is when you see people, you wanna see them do well. Your higher power and just be a good thing for society, but again, the biggest thing though is you don't wanna be enabling them, if that makes any sense.
A hundred percent, hundred percent. I mean, like you say, when it comes to things like, you know, uh, you know, East Van and uh. Uh, the supervised consumption sites, you know, and the supervised supply. Like, I mean, they found cases where people were getting supervised, you know, um, government provided supply. They were selling it to young people so they get the cash to buy the more, the more nasty drugs, um. It was enabling a whole new generation of, of drug users, illicit drug users, it's. Um, I, I, I think the only, only reasonable, um, course is prohibition, you know, to find a way to, you know. No means no, just say no, go back to, uh, uh, the way things were and, you know, get, get rid of them.
Got you, a hundred percent. I agree with you, Jeff. And what, and what's more important for the city right now? Building, uh, new. Homes and commercial space or rehabbing and expanding, better utilizing existing homes and storefronts?
Uh, I think you have to do both. I mean, you have to grow, you know, re- uh, rehab our, our, our inner city or in our neighborhoods. But with the, the growth we've seen in Winnipeg in the last like two, three years, the last three years, we've had eighty thousand new people in Winnipeg. You, you know, we've probably just recently passed eight hundred and fifty thousand people in the city of Winnipeg. Uh, we've been growing, this is faster than in my lifetime, I think, at any point in terms of the rate of growth in Winnipeg. So, um, our biggest challenge to any growth right now is, uh, our sewage capacity. Right now, we're doing a multi-billion dollar upgrade to our sewage tra- treatment plant. And you know, I'm hearing from some Winnipeggers, it's like, hey, these bills are getting ridiculous now, the cost of having to do these upgrades. Maybe we don't wanna keep growing. I think that's a conversation that, you know, we need to have, you know, it. Is gro- is continued ongoing growth, you know, the, the panacea that we think it is, or at some point do we say, hey? Let's be a great, you know, medium-sized Canadian city with an NHL hockey team and a great art scene. You know, being able to, you know, drive to Lake within an hour and, you know, middle-class people being able to afford a cottage. Or, you know, do we wanna live in like sardines and, you know, in apartment blocks, uh, everywhere that, you know, you're never gonna own? Because everything's so expensive.
Absolutely.
I, I, I think we're getting close to that breaking point.
And it's unfortunate, Jeff, and then I wanna like, just like circle back about like the first question I asked you about like to talk about East Van and about how the city is with. The, the drug situation, but the biggest thing though is I feel that we should have like recovery programs, addictions and different treatments. To remedy the situation, better to be proactive rather than to be reactive. I know what your feelings are towards that at all, or.
Absolutely, I mean. Um, trying to get people, you know, who still have an opportunity to turn their life around, I mean, let's. I mean, everybody, you wanna help everybody that's out there, but some people have, you know, gone through such a downward spiral, they're probably not going to be, um. Uh, contributing members of society more, but people who are starting to slip, try to find a way to, to prop them up, to get them those supports they need, like you say, different types of, uh. Rehab, rehabilitation programs and, and stuff like that. I think that's trying to catch people before, you know, they get. Into the deepest, darkest places. I mean, I, I understand some people have to hit some level of rock bottom. Let's hope their rock bottom's not. You know, as, as bad as, you know, some that unfortunately some Winnipeggers are experiencing.
Absolutely, and just to expand on that point at all, Jeff, the biggest thing though is make sure, medical disclaimer, make sure you always consult with medical professionals and what have you. Because even if you're on the deep end, there's always help out there and if.
Right.
A situation may arise, always reach out to the frontline workers, that's what, what they're used for in the city, and if you have any issues in the city. Consult Jeff, that's like the biggest thing I could really like emphasize.
For sure.
I'm sure you're on board. I don't think I miss said anything. And how do you feel about the transportation options currently involved in the city if. For all our residents, residents affordability you brought up earlier about how we're almost at a breaking point. Get where they need to go and if not, what would you do to improve transportation in our city?
Uh, well, again, um, you know, Winnipeg was built without freeways for the good, for good and for good ba- for bad. So, uh, I mean, we are building some of our major arterial roadways, continuing those along, things like Chief Peg's Trail. Expanding Kennison Boulevard, I believe are very important. Uh, we're also blowing up our transit map, um. Again, I was meeting with seniors this morning, um, we're building a transit system for the twenty-first century, um. The routes that I had when I was, you know, a ten-year-old or twelve-year-old, really have.
Well, you're only twenty-five, right, Jeff? I think you said that early in the interview.
Yeah, so yeah, like ten years ago, sure, let's go, yeah. Um, our transit map really hasn't changed dramatically and we really had a hub and spoke approach. Everything, you know, led to downtown. And, you know, then you go back out. Now we're gonna have more of a, a grid system where you'll be able to, um, you know, get more places. Have spine and feeders, we're gonna have less, you know, buses taking all sorts of crazy, you know, uh. Routes, um, again, there's gonna be some trips that are gonna be more difficult, you know, if you've always lived in North Main and you always go to Corden. That could have been one bus. You live in North Caledonian, you go to Polo Park, one bus. It's changing, everything's, you know, uh.
Population's expanding.
Population's expanding, so I mean, uh, again, we can't build roads forever to the, you know, to serve absolutely everybody everywhere. In terms of, uh, you know, in single passenger cars, uh, putting, getting people on the bus is a very, uh, economical way. Uh, expanding our transportation capacity within the city. Uh, I'm, I'm very pro-transit, uh, you know, even though, you know, it does require taxpayer support, so do roads. I mean, the cost of, you know, maintaining and building and.
Thanks for stopping, Jeff, I already know that, but again, you're very wise beyond your years, brother.
Yeah, yeah, so I mean, uh, even though transit is a, uh, a cost. Uh, and you know, and I do, a totally separate, you know, point, I do believe we need to, uh. Crack down on people who evade fares. I mean, some people who legitimately can't afford it, it's one thing, but. You've got a newer iPhone and fancier clothes than I wear. You gotta make sure you're paying your transit fares.
Absolutely, cause again, going back to that whole phrase of enabling, you don't wanna be enabling that wherever it becomes commonplace because. It has to benefit the economy, benefit the city, and then obviously the other people that are riding the transit, like there's so many variables to look at.
So, yeah, I, again, I think our transit network's there and you know, um. People think I'm the anti-bike guy, I have to say that's.
You're a pro bike guy, man, we've had that talk.
I, I do believe that, you know, riding your bike in minus thirty with a crazy wind is, uh, insane, it's, uh. Uh, those people are extreme cyclists and the degree to which we've now prioritized plowing snow. On bike lanes in the middle of winter for such a tiny percentage of population who would ride their bikes in those times is insane. I don't support it. But on the flip side, Winnipeg is insanely flat. Uh, you can be a fairly, you know, moderately out of shape, middle-aged guy like myself and, you know, have the physical ability to hop on a bike and. You know, get halfway across the city. Uh, and in the summer, I mean, I think it is a very practical and reasonable thing to, 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 to encourage and to do.
For sure.
Port, um, but you know, at the same time, you know, uh, you don't have to have a bike route down every road, um. You know, when you're talking about taking away huge amounts of parking and, and lane capacity for majority of people who are driving vehicles. It's, it's, it's not a good use in every case, so. Uh, I even like the idea of seasonal bike lanes. We are spending so much money and so much resources, um, plowing. Uh, these bike lanes, you know, in the downtown in the winter for so few people. Put down temporary barriers, put them out there, you know. Middle of April, middle of October, pick them up, pull them away. The amount you save in snow removal, the amount you, you know, you bring back in terms of parking to help downtown businesses. Uh, to me, it makes infinite sense.
Absolutely, and it's beginning infinite sense to expand on like that whole thing about bikes at all, Jeff. I don't know if you remember this, but again, people that I know that are relatively within your age range and I say that with kindness of first and foremost. Is there used to be licenses for bikes? Do you ever think that would be something to reestablish in society? Because. There's always a debate between cyclists and obviously people that drive vehicles.
Yeah, I mean, I like it, I mean. Uh. My primary, uh, issue is, uh, bikes and that are often, often used in, you know, committing, uh, you know, drug crimes. And, and various types of, um. Having a level of responsibility of, you know, being licensed when you're driving, when you're riding a bike, I, I, I think is a very positive thing. Uh, in that, you know, you have to, you know, follow the, the rules of the road as well as being identifiable to, um, to police in areas where, uh. You know, crimes that are happening and drug crimes in particular.
Right, and Jeff, if you had to say, basically, some people in our community say that. We have traffic problems, what do you think? Because the population has expanded, which we talked about already, which is commonplace. How would you mitigate those concerns for consoling someone about being a remedy to the situation rather than the problem?
Yeah, um, again, uh, expanding those main arterial roadways so that. You know, people can move a lot of that traffic away from smaller local roads like your, you know, uh. Partridge and Lila and move that traffic onto Chief Peg's Trail or from Phillips, Inster and move it on to Chief. Building proper, you know, facilities, uh, I think helps, you know, build that capacity, um. Yeah, I mean, we, we've had some benefit from, um, we've had some benefit from, um. Sorry, my wife's just getting home here, um, we've had, uh.
Hi to the misses, brother.
Oops, talking to the dog, I'm just doing an interview here, Tara. I'm doing an interview, so if you can just be a little quiet for a couple of minutes. All right, um. Sorry, where were we, Derek?
Okay, I'll re- ask that question at all, Jeff, and hi to Tara Brody, Jeff's wife, make sure you give. Tara some respect and kindness, cause Jeff's amazing with what he's doing, giving his time and his energy, so thank you first and foremost, Jeff. Some people in our community say that we have a traffic problem, what do you think? Because the population has expanded, which is commonplace. How would you mitigate these concerns or console someone about being a remedy to the situation a- as opposed to the problem?
Yeah, I mean, a combination of things, you know, I mean, again, I think new transit route network will make more transit more usable for more people. Because if I, once it's a viable option, if you can just hop on a bus and not have to think about the traffic, that's a positive. Um. Encouraging more people to, you know, stop, you know, to, to change their work patterns, you know, um, I'm, I'm noticing now like middle of the day. Traffic is way worse than it used to be, which, you know, it's, at least it's spreading it out. You're not seeing the, the extreme peaks like you used to, like during, during rush hours, it's. I don't wanna say it's better be- being busy all the time, but it, it, it has spread out, uh, I think traffic, which, which I think is generally a good thing. Um, encouraging, you know, some cycling where it makes sense. Again, I don't think it makes sense riding your bike at minus thirty at a. Minus fifty wind chill, but. As I said already, um, and yeah, again, encourage, you know, find ways to better time lights, to better time, uh, you know. Build intersections wherever possible, you know, with great separations.
Right.
Region Lajmermodye, I mean, it'd be a great place to build, uh, you know, a, a bit of a cloverleaf, sort of, say even what they have at, um. Uh, Pembina Highway and Avenue de Miquana where, you know, uh, Lajmermodye could say go under, uh, Regent. And, you know, there'd be on and off, uh, access points at Regent, for example, something like that would, uh. Dramatically improve traffic flow, uh, on Lajmermodye and Regent for that matter.
For sure, and expect, like, to really like tie that together, there's been a lot of conversations I've had with a lot of people through all age demographics. They were talking about how like, if you look out west. While they were talking Saskatchewan, Alberta and B C. There is a lot of influence of overpasses. I know we've really established a lot of roundabouts in the city of Winnipeg. I don't know what your feelings are towards overpasses like safer lash. To navigate through traffic, similar how Jubilee is, has that ever been a thought process in your mind or any other meetings that you've had?
Yeah, I mean, absolutely, I mean, intersections like that certainly move traffic better. I mean, the perimeter highway like at, uh, fifty-nine and one-on-one on the north side. The big major intersection they built there a number of years ago has obviously improved. The big major intersection they built there a number of years ago has obviously improved the traffic flow through that area entirely. And again, it's right near where I live here, uh. You know, in North Clodonan. You know, we were able to build Chief Pegwais Trail with, uh, an underpass at Rothase rather than, uh, another set of lights. That was a great move and, uh. An important initiative when we did, uh, the last section of Chief Pegwais Trail that I that I pushed strongly for. And, uh, we, the city continues to own enough land. At Henderson and Chief Peg was that in the future, um, we could do, uh, in a cloverleaf there as well. So. Um, we need to plan for it. We need to, you know, get the land. We need to hold on to the land, you know. Tempting, you know, as the finance chair, it's like, oh, we could get X number of millions of dollars to, uh, sell that land near Chief and Henderson, but it's like, no. Uh, our city's still growing. We may need a a larger intersection there. So, holding on to it is is important.
Absolutely, Jeff. This is a question that again popped in my mind while you were saying that. If you were, if the city had gave you a million dollar government grant, what would be something you would want to implement and why?
Million dollars.
Yes.
It's a nice amount of money, but it's not a massive amount of money anymore.
Considering with the inflate inflation with grocery places in a commune that, that when you brought up about like apartments and houses.
Um, if I had some additional money that, you know, I was, you know, investing at the city of Winnipeg, I would find. Uh, an employee and a consultant to figure out a way to, um, more sensibly. Coordinate road projects. And minimize the amount of closures for, um, you know. What we call construction cuts or or servicing cuts. So like if, you know, Manitoba Hydro or Rogers or the city of Winnipeg Water Department. Needs to fix a pipe on Henderson Highway. They pull a permit from the Public Works Department. We're closing a lane. We're gonna dig a hole and we're gonna go fix this pipe. They fix the pipe and then it's like, oh, now we need to fix one to block up.
Yep.
And then a month later, uh. Uh, Manitoba Hydro or Center Gas or somebody else has to keep tying it up. Let's coordinate it. Let's say for the month of July. If you want to get your permits done to, you know, do a cut on Henderson Highway, it's half price or twenty years. Or you pay ten percent of what it what a cut is, but you only can do it in July. You have to be in there and out of there in July. If you want to do it in August, let's say it's three times as much. Let's try to coordinate. So, all the construction, little dumb little one lane closures for one block. Screw up traffic for like months on end. Try to coordinate them all together so that it's, uh, it's done. And I I I think. We could, you know, provide provide incentives. We could hire, you know, uh. Uh, a staff person or two and maybe a consultant for a million bucks, you know, for the next ten years to 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 smooth that out. That's what, that's something I give, if I, if, you know, give me a million dollars and I could change something, that's what I would do.
Awesome, Jeff. And that's very powerful stuff. And I believe that's going to happen, especially if it happens to you like tomorrow. But I'm not saying it's going to happen tomorrow, but it would be nice.
There you go.
Yep. If you, if you could change one thing in our zoning code, what would it be and why?
Um. One thing I've been trying to get through and it's a small thing, um. We don't want people to have, like, especially if a smaller residential lot, to keep your trailer in your yard like all year round. You can't store it in your yard over the winter. However, in the summer, you know, you might take your cat, your trailer out camping every weekend. You want to have your trailer in your driveway. That's great.
Yep.
For some reason, it doesn't start until May fifteenth. Everyone's agreed that May first is a more sensible date to change that to. They just haven't put it into the zoning code yet. And we need to sneak that one in there, because I I have quite a few people who, you know, again, our summers are short. Our summers are precious Manitoba. And they want to bring their cottage, they want to bring their trailers into their yards, starting or the driveways, starting May first. And, uh. They've said we're gonna do it, but it's taking way longer than necessary to get there.
Got you, Jeff. And if someone like a young, driven, ambitious college student approached you for career advice, whether it's to be a city councillor. An entrepreneur or whatever, what advice would you give them and what should they ignore?
Well, I mean, follow your passion. I mean, figure out what, you know. Would make gets you excited to get up every day, you know, what, um, you know, you believe in, what you think is important. And, uh, you know, go for it. You know, I, uh, I thought I, you know, wanted to get, you know, get into public life to to give back to my community. I wasn't even sure if it was a municipal or federal. Or provincial at the time. Um, there was a city councillor up in this area and there were some things I think went off track. So. Let my name stand. I went in there with all guns a blazing and, uh, I I I beat a an incumbent city councillor that those things happen. It's. It's it's not, it's not super usual, but it but it happens. So, um. Yeah, I I just, I found some issues that I think, uh, were important to the people in North Clodonan, uh, got my message out there. I worked really hard. I had a really good team of, uh, friends and family and volunteers that, uh, got behind me. And, uh, it's been a, it's been a really, uh, great run and very, very blessed to have this opportunity.
Absolutely, Jeff. And that basically another question about having opportunities. I'll give you a scenario as a person coming. To you with a proposal to build a new plate piece of public infrastructure in our city, whether it be a road, bridge, et cetera. How would you evaluate whether or not that product was worth implementing?
Uh, I mean, the city has formal processes, um, you know, what's the return on investment? Like, will it, you know, allow us to build more homes? Will allow us to, you know. Uh, attract more jobs to our city, you know, on a permanent basis. Um, will it improve the quality of life of residents, you know, building a spray pad or a or a playground or a new park? Um, you know, even a piece of public art has has a value. So, it's, uh. There's, there's always so much balancing to do. Like, I mean, there's no shortage of good ideas. It's just trying to figure out what, you know, uh, what we believe in, what's the most important. And, uh, um, figuring your way forward. I've, you know, I think been fairly successful over time, you know, getting the things. That I feel are important done. I mean, I'd like to, you know. Continue like investing in. I know it's not that exciting or sexy, but repaving our streets that, you know, are pothole filled. Uh, you know, rather than some shiny bobble, you know, uh. Getting down to basics and stuff to me is very important. And, uh, you know, we still have some some room to go there. I I'm happy to say that, you know, we're investing more in our roads every year than, you know, it it continues to go up. Uh, sometimes, you know, the cost of construction inflation is, you know, uh, more than the initial money we give, but I will, we have. We are now investing more than ever before. So, it is positive.
Awesome. And if you had to say like, again, for something like, this is going to help really expand our tourism in Winnipeg and it's going to benefit the city. It's going to benefit me as a listener. Or listeners and yourself, obviously. What are three places that you like to spend time in Winnipeg and why?
I love the forks, um, just beautiful. Uh, you can bring the dog outside, uh. You can grab a beer and sit outside. It's, uh, it's a great spot. Um. Bunce Creek Centennial Park. It's a neat little park in North Clodonan. It's a linear park that goes from. Uh, Raleigh all the way down to the Red River, um, by Henderson Highway. You can, feels like in the middle of absolute nowhere, but you know, you're. Fifteen minutes from Portage de Maine. It's, uh, it's a, it's a neat little spot. Um, and beyond that, um. I, again, I love going to to Jets games and seeing, uh, Jets games, a beautiful summer day going to, uh, uh. Uh, Princess Auto Stadium now. It's, it's, we've got more bomber season ticket holders.
I still recall I counted in stadium, Jeff, because I just like.
Corporate sponsor there, yes. I was thinking IG Field, no, it's Princess Auto now. Yeah. Turn on the bombers and, uh, you know, uh, just all those people rooting for the same cause. It's, it's, uh, it's fun and.
Absolutely. When the city comes together and they're in conjunction with what's going on, that's very powerful stuff. But you were about to say something, Jeff, and I apologize for cutting you off.
Yeah, no, no. Like, I mean, again, like this, this last Sunday, like, you know, I was at home, but I felt connected to everybody, you know, in in the city, in this province that, uh. Cheering on that, uh, that prof- profetti goal there with two seconds left. I mean, like, how wild was that?
Very wild. Concerned that expectations were low, like the Jets fans were like, again, I don't like this. Narrative on social media, do or die, because the biggest thing though is these coaches are passionate, like Scott Arneal is definitely gonna be a coach of the year candidate.
Yep.
And then Connor Hallebuck, again, he's just been resilient through his whole career with the Jets, so cut him some slack. He played amazing. I understand people have their opinions, just like you and I do about certain issues.
Yeah.
But but the biggest thing though collectively as a city, we need to come together. And as you said with the profetti, how you felt relief. Entrenched with everybody that's a Jets fan. And when you're closer together, it makes life better and it makes society better.
Hundred percent, Derek.
Yeah. And if what is the book or books that you've given most as a gift and why? And if not. What book, what are three books that have greatly influenced your life?
Hmm. I haven't read a lot of books lately. I gotta make some more time for that. Uh, one book that I've I've handed out a fair bit. It's a book by the American Planning Association. It's like, uh, Urban Planners Group. Uh, it's how to hold successful public meetings. Yeah, you know, one of the harder things in this, in this job is, you know, uh. You know, having to, you know, do, um, like zoning, um, hearings.
Right.
Um, you know, our city plans say, yes, you know, we need to build more housing. We need to, you know, build, build, build. We need to build up. We need to build out. We need to do these. Things. And then, you know, people who live in the area, it's like, no, we don't want change. We don't want, you know, more traffic on our street. We don't want, you know. Maybe a slight shadow from a, you know, a four story or a six story building. For me, you know, when we were planning to build Chief Pegwais, I mean, everyone knew, everyone should have known that that land that was, you know, left empty for Chief Pegwais was going to eventually be a roadway. But some of the people that backed onto it were quite upset. Uh, so this book about from the American Planning Association is how to, uh, you know, handle yourself in a public meeting. Ideally, like, here's how you can do a meeting. But if you don't have a say on how the meeting's done, one of the most powerful pieces of advice is get to the meeting first. Go to the door. Try to look everybody who's coming into the meeting in the eyes so that they're not some sort of anonymous person at the back of the room lobbing shots at you. You've already made eye contact with them as they entered the room and, you know, shaking their hand and said hi to them. So, try to say hi to everybody as they come into a hearing, for example, if if you can do it.
That's super powerful, man.
I love other things in that book. So, I've I've handed this book out to a lot of people that, you know, were nervous and, you know, uh, apprehensive about having to be part of a public hearing. So, so there's an example.
Awesome. And what's your favorite movie, Jeff?
Uh, probably National Anthem's Vacation. As, uh, growing up, you know, we used to take a lot of family road trips and, uh, you know, if if things don't go, you know, half as bad as the Griswolds, you're having a good time. So, yeah.
Gotcha. And what are bad recommendations you hear in your professional area of expertise?
Sorry?
What are bad recommendations you hear, Jeff, in your profession or area of expertise?
What kind of ex?
Bad recommendation, just like.
Bad recommendations?
Yes.
Bad recommendations, uh. Not communicating. Like, some people want to, you know, if they think news is going to be bad, you know, just sort of, you know, try to sh- crawl into your shell and and not. Be, you know, communicative. Uh, I believe it's better to be out there, tackle things head on, be honest. Uh, and and, you know, and then take, you know, take, take the. Ta- take the, uh, the hit and, you know, even if what you have to say is going to be controversial or or unpopular. Um, you know, uh, do what you believe. Uh, you gotta look at yourself every day. And, uh, I think that's, you know, some people who are trying to, you know. Not face things head on. Uh, I I think is is, you know, I think that's that's the worst advice.
And in the last five years, Jeff, would have you become better at saying no to and what? Are realizations or approaches that you have that has helped you?
Yeah, um. Ag- again, you know, uh, people realize that, uh, you know, elected officials have a lot of, uh, commitments. Uh, you know, to their community. And, you know. Do I go to the police ball every year? No. Do I get there every couple of years? I try to. You know, sometimes it's nice to have just a Saturday and, you know, at home and, you know, barbecue some steak with some friends, you know, like. Take, take some time for yourself a little bit here and there. So. I think I've gotten maybe a little better in the last five years, you know, trying to take at least a little bit of time. I I love talking to people. If I'm out at, you know, Boston Pizza or Smitty's and you want to talk about, you know, your back lane. Nine times out of ten, I'm more than happy to, you know.
Love it, brother.
Uh, you know, hear from you and try to try to help you with your with your problem. But, you know. Uh, there are times where, you know, taking a little bit of time for yourself is important. And I think I've probably gotten a little better in the last five years.
And speaking of which, what do you feel is the most misconception that people think about you?
Yeah, I mean. I think people expect us to like have, you know, control over every, you know, pe- you know, s- um. Piece of, uh, snow clearing equipment and garbage truck. And again, the city has almost ten thousand employees. Um. It's a massive organization. I don't know what the ice attendant is doing over at, you know, River East Arena today or the pool attendant at. Elmond's Cologne's Pool or, uh, the the person cutting the grass, you know, on the Northeast Piner's Greenway. Um, we're not directly. You know, talking to them on a daily basis. Um, unfortunately, I'm sure they're wonderful people, but I've, you know, a lot of them I've never, I've never met. Uh, I do believe, you know, most, you know, in terms of misconceptions that city employees are lazy. I think that's a big misconception.
That's BS.
I believe most of them are are hardworking. They they're honest. They try to put in an honest day's work and they're good people. Uh, that's something I've learned over time and, you know, not that it was, you know, highly doubted, but that's a misconception that is too prevalent out there, I think, in society. Um, yeah.
Awesome. And what purchase of a hundred dollars or less has positively impacted your life in the last six months or in recent memory?
Under a hundred bucks, eh?
Throw in some curveball, buddy.
We bought some of these little Ikea tables for our sunroom that, you know, were pretty darn cheap and, uh, they're doing, they're doing the trick.
Nice. And what is the, one of the most best and most worthwhile investments you've made?
I'm surprised how much I use my AirPods for like work and for and for leisure. I didn't think I'd, uh, like the sound quality. I didn't think they'd be as useful as a business tool. As they've turned out to be. I got them thinking, you know, this is mostly a toy, but like the number of meetings that I have taken, you know, on my phone where, you know, I'm in a public space. And I need to participate in a Zoom call or whatever. Um, surprising how legitimate of a of a tool they are.
Absolutely. And, uh, basically I would ask, or what's your most treasured possession that you've had since you were a kid and what was the significance behind it?
I think the most impactful. You know, material good that I got was my first computer, just nineteen eighty-five. I got an Apple two C for Christmas and. Um, just the opportunities and the, um, thought processes, you know, learning how to program a little bit. Getting into bulletin board systems and later the internet. Uh, being sort of a leader in in, you know, in those areas when I was young, I think was probably. Uh, healthy and informative.
For sure. Cause I, cause to your point, Jeff, I find like you're like, again, proactive and innovative in the sense like you brought up Steve Jobs as being your hero earlier.
Yeah.
But again, how fa- how you fast tracked with iPhones, then obviously the other computers that have been released with Apple. But also at the same time, though, just about how society's very been progressed and like innovative, about how I remember a teacher. When I was in, like, in elementary school, she said that you wouldn't need to learn how to use cursive writing. That's almost becoming extinct, unfortunately. But at the same time, though, if you have like very good computer skills, whether it's programming, understanding the different programs to use. It's like even doing these podcasts, it's very beneficial for someone to do. And there's always progress with technology. And like, again. There's good and bad to both sides, obviously.
Yeah, um, and again, so like the computer and my dad took me to like the Winnipeg Apple Computer User Group back in the day, which I later. Became the president of and the the Mac Computer Club later. Um, it was sort of my early opportunities to get into public speaking, which, you know, as an elected official, that's something you kind of do. I mean, you're you're. Public speaking. I overcame that fear at a very young age. One of my first regular jobs, it was, uh, I think late nineteen ninety-three. I s- I was. No, it was earlier than that. It was before my sixteenth birthday. I started working at a laser tag place at Confusion Corner called Dark Zone.
Geez, that that's the time war, man. I remember Dark Zone. That was a good place.
And I used to be one of their guides there. So, I had to go, you know, every half hour, uh, explain to people how to play the game. I was a guide and. I'd give a lecture and, you know, that public speaking was, uh, you know, very formative in my early years.
Awesome. And what do you feel, Jeff, is the biggest problem in Winnipeg and how are you handling it right now?
Again, I think it's, uh, the homelessness and addictions and, uh, and 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 crime. Um. And we are, you know, trying to work with the province and the federal government. To find housing with supports for for people. Um, working, you know, with the provincial government there. And we're advocating, you know, I'm the city's rep on the Association of Manitoba Municipalities. And the Federation of Municipalities, you know, you know, lobbying for bail reform. So that, you know, repeat violent offenders aren't out there, you know, um, harming more people and more commu- and the community. Um. So, I I I, those are, I think, the, I think that's the biggest challenge we face. And, uh, I still feel we're, uh, on, you know. It's getting worse, not better. So, uh, and again, and providing those supports. I mean, the city of Winnipeg, you know, our entire budget, you know, including. Our water and waste utility, transit, the whole consolidated city operation is about two billion dollars a year. A number of years ago, when family services and housing were one department, one department of government, it had a budget of over three billion dollars. The city of Winnipeg is not going to be able to provide the level of, um, uh, housing and addiction supports that that our community needs. We just, we 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 maintain about sixty-five percent of the infrastructure out there and of every tax dollar, like everybody, you know. For every tax dollar you get, you spend, the city of Winnipeg gets about ten, ten cents of it. For every tax dollar you get, you spend, the city of Winnipeg gets about ten, ten cents of it. Municipal governments in Canada, so uh we have a huge demand and we have, you know, limited resources, so we're not going to be the ones who are going to be able to to fix. Uh the social ills out there.
Yep.
Uh, you know, we have to, we we do provide policing and that budget now is, you know, three hundred and fifty million dollars a year approximately. It's an awful lot of money, but it's, but it's important, but when people are in the public sphere, they deserve it, need to feel safe. And, you know, our our tool uh is police, they're the ones with the stick, you know, they, you know. They're not the ones who are going to rehabilitate you, but, you know, they're the ones that have to, you know, they literally lay down the law.
Positive reinforcement and negative reinforcement, just like common psychology, but the biggest thing, Jeff, I want to expand on the, you talked about municipal government, giving a little bit of our listeners. Background of how things work, for our listeners, again, you know what party I stand with, I was pretty on my social media who I stand with really. And I know who you stand with, tell our listeners what's better, a better government, government in your opinion and why, minority or majority?
Ah, I mean, there are some benefits to both, I mean, I I think at this point, you know, um. Again, I'm not a, I'm not a liberal, but I almost wish that the government had perhaps become uh my majority, just again. Uh, you have a little more control of being, being able to move forward with your agenda. Um, I do hope that uh, you know, everybody who's in the house, in particular in my mind, the conservatives are are willing to work with. Liberals to move forward on the files that, you know, conservatives and the liberals care about, some of these things, like I mentioned, you know, the uh. Uh justice reforms and bail reforms and and stuff like that, um I hope the conservatives, you know, um. Realize that, you know, this government's probably going to be around for a considerable amount of time, uh you know, the liberals aren't, the NDP aren't in any shape to, you know. Uh collapse things to uh to cause a new government or a new election, Canadians don't want a new election, um. So I I hope that uh, you know, building, building energy corridors, pipelines, um I hope they're serious about it, I'm not convinced Mark Carney. Is, but I I really hope that, you know, some of the comments he made in some interviews uh do hold true.
For sure, and Raquel Danko, going back to like a, the party that I stand with, I think you're firmly, again, again, I respect any opposition with whatever our leaders say. We follow bottom li- line, just like with with what our frontline workers or whatever their expectations are, you abide by. What's your standpoint on terms of like Raquel Danko, because I think she, like I've heard her in like different house meetings, she's incredible as a speaker and as a leader, in my honest opinion.
Yeah, she's strong, I mean, she, she, she's a very impressive uh uh human being and member of parliament. Uh, very well spoken, uh I I I think very highly of her, I was a supporter of hers back when she sought the conservative nomination in Caledonian St. Paul. Uh helped, you know, sign up some members for her and uh, uh I I still, I work quite closely with her, so I I I'm quite, I'm I'm a strong supporter of hers.
Awesome, what are three strengths that people may not think of her, but in your honest opinion, Jeff, that you know factually about her? Because like you said, you were with her in a running, you guys pretty much work closely together.
Yeah, I mean, she's diligent, I mean, she puts in the time, she knows her her briefing points, she knows, you know, um. Uh what's going on in the world and she's, she's a very good uh uh speaker, um. She went to McGill University in Montreal and I think the skills she learned there are, you know, working very well for her. Um, you know, she comes from a uh strong political family, uh she talks about how uh. Uh debating and arguing with her, her father as a, as a child, you know, really got her ready for debates in the House of Commons. And uh, yeah, and another fun fact, uh apparently my, my wife was once her swimming teacher.
Huh? And this is the first time, so Jeff, my final question, again, thank you for being generous and gracious with your time. Is there any issues that you felt with this interview, any last parting words, any advice to our listeners and just your overall general opinions? I know that's a galauded question.
No, uh I appreciate the time, Derek, and uh, again, I I really feel it's a wonderful opportunity I have to, you know, shape our city, to shape the future of our city. Um, I love the uh, you know, again, this, you know, last week was a good example of, you know, again, losing one of my colleagues who. Had a different political viewpoint in mind, but I still feel like a massive loss because I I know he was a dedicated public servant and uh. Uh he made our city better in his own unique ways, so um, again. Appreciate the the opportunity to both speak with you today and and get, you know, some of these, these comments out there.
Awesome, and do you feel that there was any issues of things that we talked about in your opinion from a city guy at all? Or do you think everything was pretty much spot on and now it's said in a positive constructive way?
I think it was pretty good, pretty darn good, Derek, for first uh, for first interview with you there, I think it was pretty good, I uh. I have some allergies this week, my, I feel like my eyes are kind of a little puffier than than normal, but uh regardless, uh not appreciate the opportunity.
Awesome, Jeff, thank you very much for your time, man, and we'll talk soon, I'll see you down the road, brother.
You bet, take care, Derek, thanks.
Take care, Jeff, bye for now.